Good evening, everyone. I call the Select Board to order tonight, Tuesday, July 25 at 7:06 PM. A motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, Ms.?
Aye.
Aye.
McChrisky?
Yes.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call, Mr. Gito.
I'm here.
Ms. McChrisky?
I am here as well.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Here.
Mr. Carrera?
Here.
And I am here as well. I ask for you to stand to salute our flag if you are able.
... to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings, and recently extended until March 31, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if the live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. Tonight's agenda will be, we have Select Board comments, Town Manager comments, Citizens' comments. We'll go right into consent agenda. We'll appoint someone to the Brockton area transit. And then our final agenda item will be to consider the solid waste rates policy and practice procedure and operations as presented tonight. And then we'll go right into executive session. This is not a public hearing. We will not be accepting comments and questions from the audience since we previously had our information sessions and it was open to, we had two, and it was open to the public. However, with that said, our Town Manager, I'm asking if you will make yourself available for any questions from the public after our meeting tonight.
Madam Chair, it would be my pleasure.
Thank you very much. So moving right along to Select Board comments. Are there any comments from the Select Board? Mr. Gito.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of observations and one request. Or maybe one observation and one request. Last Sunday, I think we had a record number of people at the Ames Pond waterfront. And it was remarkably more than most times. And I would just suggest that we keep that in mind at the end of the year because we may need to see whether or not in the future we need to create more space or do something to deal with larger crowds than perhaps we've had. We're getting more younger families moving back into town, coming into places that people like me were in before. So, I mean, that's part of the issue, I think, and we need to recognize it and be prepared to deal with it. The second thing is a request. I'm hoping that we can have two meetings of the Board of Selectmen in August, the first and the third Tuesday. We've had a pretty full schedule, and the summer is going to be escaping us if we don't have a little bit of time to do something else. So I just suggest that we all keep that in mind and see if we can plan to do the things that we need to do within those two meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. We took that as a motion. We second.
Well, I can't do that.
Are there any other comments from the Select Board? Okay. I do have a comment. Recently, I attended a reception at the Federal Reserve Bank, and it was in recognition for the two-year program. Most of your leaders were in, most of the leaders of, in the REMAP program. That's the Racial Equity Municipal Action Plan. That was a grant that we applied for and received approximately two years ago. And we received a certificate of recognition and participation, and it says, "In recognition of your efforts to advance racially equitable outcomes in your municipality." Stoughton, this was signed by the organizations, the MAPC and the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston and the Government Alliance of Race and Equity. And I would like to hand this to you, and perhaps you could frame it and put it on the first floor. And I could tell you, I hate to start listing, thank you, it's like we're graduating.
Thank you.
To start listing names because I might overlook some, but it was Teresa Tapper and Deanna and Tracy and Christopher McGee, Fran, I mean Reggie. It's just a long list, and I just hope I haven't overlooked a name, but they should be congratulated as well. And that's all I have for right now. Moving right along to Town Manager comment. Oh, did I, no comments from any others? Select Board.
Thanks again, Madam Chair. Just one comment or announcement. Paula Newt, the Treasurer Collector, issued the FY '24 First Quarter Real Estate and Personal Property Tax Bills on June 30, '23. The tax bills are due on August 1, 2023. All unpaid first-quarter tax balances will accrue interest at a rate of 14% from the first-quarter due date. Real estate and personal property tax bills may be paid at Town Hall or dropped in the drop box outside Town Hall or paid online at stotan.org. The FY '23 water, sewer, trash demand bills were mailed on July 12, '23 and will be due on July 26, '23. These bills may now be paid at Town Hall or dropped off in the drop box outside Town Hall. The Collector's Office is now accepting payments by credit card and debit cards in the Collector's Office for all tax and water, sewer, and trash bills. There is a 3% fee if a card is used to make a payment. That's my only announcement, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gito.
Through you to the Town Manager. One of us should say a word or two about the 911 public meeting that is going to take place this Thursday at 6:00 at the, in this great hall, so.
Mr. Gito, I so thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay.
So as Mr. Gito said, we'll be doing a public information session this Thursday at 6:00. The Executive Director of Regional 911 will be here to present the technology plan for the town. He will be available with his staff to answer questions for those who assemble for the information hearing. And just to note that this is being posted, assuming there will be a quorum of Select Board members present. So you're free to do so, although it's not a formal selectmen's meeting. So it'll be a presentation of the Regional 911. We will not be required to open and close the meeting, just merely notice that there may be a presence of a quorum of the Select Board. Thank you, Mr. Gito.
Thank you.
Moving right along to Citizens' comments. Yes, let's start with Mrs. Walsh. She was the first hand that I saw. Oh, stay right there.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. One of the things that came out of the public hearings about trash was the esteem in which many of the attendees held our trash workers. We don't often think of, I mean, it just said.
Someone's got their mic on.
Excuse me, can you mute yourself, please, if you're not talking? And recognize. Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Walsh?
There were a number of speakers who recognized the workers that do their streets and pick up their trash and how pleasant and efficient they are, and that was heartening. And I'd like to mention some employees I had some contact with in another department. I went to the Public Library a few weeks ago to read The Brockton Enterprise, and much to my chagrin, there's no paper copy now. You have to read it on a computer. And I'm about as computer savvy as any average dog or cat, and I had to ask for assistance. And the person who was working on the second floor sat me down at a computer, started it up. When she needed help, she called forward two other employees, and with some false starts, we got me into the computer and reading the paper, and I only had to ask for help three times, but I managed to accomplish that task. And what I'd like to say is, while those folks were helping me, they helped every other person who came to that desk. Talk about multitasking. Sometimes I had to go down a floor to help people with a copying machine, but nobody stood in line, and nobody went away disgusted, and nobody stood on one foot tapping their heel. It was just amazing performance. The next day, I did call the library director. The library employees don't wear the name tags of any kind, so I don't know who the ladies were. He said he could figure it out based on the position of the employee and what time it was of the day. But sometimes we forget, there's a lot of atta girl and atta boys for first responders, but these folks, I guess you call them second responders, but without the folks that are picking up our trash and without the folks that help us at the library, a lot of us would be adrift. And I just wanted to recognize the good work that all the employees do, and they do it with a smile on their face, and nobody went at my lack of ability.
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank Cynthia. Every time a town employee receives a compliment like that, it means more than anybody could imagine, and I appreciate it because now I know where to go to figure out how to read the online newspaper, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Cynthia.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, the next person was Ms., oh, okay, we'll just go in line. The next, Ms. Colburn, then on and on until we.
Thank you. Pat Colburn, Precinct 4, 53 Gilbert Drive. I won't get into the trash because you said not to, although I would have lobbied people if I'd known we couldn't have gone into it, but I did want to comment that I'm here to hear the conversation. I've heard from people that it's a done deal, that the boards made up their mind, and I'm giving everyone the benefit of the doubt that that's not the case, that there wasn't any type of serial deliberation, that nobody talked individually with the Town Manager and talked amongst yourself. And I've been on boards, and that's really hard to control, so I have all the empathy in the world for that. But I'm looking forward to the conversation, and I hope you'll talk about the detailed costs of like the bulky items that were never addressed. I have some lawn chairs to get rid of, and there's just no way I'll pay $30 for a plastic lawn chair to be removed, and things like a broken kitchen chair, things like that that aren't your sofa. I just don't want it cost prohibitive because then you'd have to call Man With Truck, and I don't know what he's going to do when he takes those items away. So I'm looking forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Colburn.
There seems to have been some confusion about discussion between myself and the board members. I want to make something clear, that I have spoken to every board member about our proposal. It's not a surprise. That is my job, is to get feedback, get input, and give input on our plan. So just for the previous speaker's knowledge, in fact, I did speak with every single board member because that's required of me. What I don't do is influence or poll. That is prohibited, and I don't do it, and I won't do it. But in terms of inform and brief, that's exactly what I do every week on every major issue before you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely, and I meant the board talking to each other. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter, because there is a perception, even when you go about it in that way, it's that it's polling, but it's not the case at all. But I wanted to recognize Mr. McChrisky, and then if Kate had some clarifying comments, the difference in the perception and the reality of that. Mr. McChrisky, though, before I get too far.
And I just wanted to mention, Madam Chair, thank you as well, is that there's no violation of the open meeting law when two colleagues talk about an issue. We do talk about an issue. It's when we get together as a quorum or when we take a break and bond our heads together in agreement with something. But we learn about an issue when we talk to our department heads, when we talk to the Town Manager or our colleagues. And I won't apologize for doing that. It's not a violation of the open meeting law, and that's how we learn, and that's how we come to a decision as elected officials, by talking to the people that are doing the job that we hire to do the job and to implement our policies. But we need to find out what the effect will be on these policies through our department heads. So it's not a violation of the open meeting law. There's a lot of talk about that, but I suggest that when people question that, if they truly question it, they should read the law for themselves and become educated. Because we're living in a world now, and I've mentioned it before, everybody thinks that they want to get you. You know, we caught you doing this, we caught you doing that. Do your homework first. And I'm not, Pat, that's not directed at you, but I've had people call me and ask me the same thing, and I've said.
You're talking serial, I don't think it's for us.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McChrisky. Yes.
Sure, would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
Oh, that would help.
Hang on. There we go. Am I on?
Yes, you are. So in terms of serial communication, what that really means is that if a staff member or me or some other third party were to take the communications and disclose to the balance of the board. So what can't occur is I speak to Lou, and then I speak to Joe, and I said, "This is what Lou said," and then I speak to Deborah, and I say, "This is what Lou said," and pass it all around, right? So you can't use a third party to effectuate a deliberation and circumvent the open meeting law. But I certainly could write an email to the entire board, because I'm not a board member, and give them a piece of advice. Where it becomes tricky is if someone were to hit the "reply all" button or something like that, and then they disclose their opinion. But what the Town Manager does is brief the board and not disclose his conversations with the other board members, so that would be acceptable.
Thank you very much for that further clarification. Moving right along, there are no further issues. Okay. Mr. Cohen, please state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Robert Cohen. I live at 134 Kotlick Street, and I'd just like to bring something to the board. Town Manager brought something in 50 years I never even realized, street looks. And I look more now, and there's a couple of things that I'd like to bring to your attention. Number one, right across the street, there's something hanging out a window that talks about a trip. If we're trying to improve the town, why do we need stuff like that? You can see it as you walk right out the front door. Another thing that annoyed me even more, Central Street, a mother with a child panhandling. There's help for people that need help in this town. I don't care where you go, but to see that, it cheapens the town of Stoughton, at least in my opinion. And something should be done to stop panhandling on our streets. The third thing is your rubbish thing there. I have noticed, I had to buy some appliances, my house is getting a little up in age, and most of the time mattresses, they'll pick them up. Stove, I paid a slight fee, they picked it up. It was just a way to get it out of the house. A lot of that stuff, if you buy new. Another thing I noticed is mattresses put out four or five days above. Someone should not do that. If you can wait, fine, but it does cheapen the look to walk and see a mattress on a sidewalk. And I hope that can be addressed, too. And also, people moving out, they leave their stuff out in the street, no consideration on a weekend, and sometime rubbish pickup isn't till Wednesday or Thursday. It does cheapen the neighborhood, and I hope that can be addressed very seriously. Again, he brought it to my attention, and now I look all over. But those particular things, really, the panhandling and signs, we have it downtown, you don't have to advertise out in the window, you can see that or other things like that. So I appreciate if something can be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Madam Chair, to address Mr. Cohen's comments regarding the mattresses and putting material out on the road several days ahead of time, I think that that is being looked at now by our Town Council, and we probably will have something to look at soon as a policy for the Board of Selectmen, for the town.
Ma'am, I have one more thing. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Gito, and yes, Mr. Cohen.
Also, when tenants put out all this debris and half of it can't be collected, I think the landlord should be held responsible. He rented the apartment, and it's up to him to make sure that all that stuff is taken care of. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. And the resident on the back row on my right side, yes, please step forward, state your name and address. Thank you. Hello and welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jonah Rosenblatt. Hello, my name is Jonah Rosenblatt, and I have three things that I wanted to bring up. First of all, I wanted to mention that I'm having a lot of trouble getting the schedule for the Climate Change Committee. I've been ghosted by the procurer of the committee, Molly. I sent her three emails, and she's completely ignored me. So I reached out to the board in the hopes that I could get this. Yes, I can check it on the website, but, you know, maybe I have a computer glitch, or maybe I don't happen to notice it after checking six days in a row, and it's on the seventh day that that's listed or something. And I just asked for some assistance, and I felt very aggrieved by my response from Mr. Cavie because he said to me, and I'm paraphrasing, and I'm just giving the gist of what he said, he didn't want to have to take on the responsibility of reminding, remembering to remind me of when the, or notifying me when he finds out what the schedule is. And I just found that really kind of egregious because you're supposed to be on the board helping people. You're supposed, you get elected to help the constituents. I don't think what I asked was that terrible, and he made it sound more like some terrible consequences would occur if he didn't, and that wasn't it at all. And my question to him would be, if someone came to you and asked you to provide them with some information in the future, do you just say, "I'm not going to take on that responsibility," or do you answer them differently than how you answered me?
I was on that, those email distributions between you and Vice Chair Cavie, and first I just wanted to share some information. I don't believe that organization has organized yet, and there's no information on the website about that, but it did come across as a bit aggressive, but that was my observation. But I would like, Vice Chair Cavie, can you speak to this? Because it's disheartening when we're having this conversation.
Yeah, so that we make sure that we're actually talking about what actually occurred. I did print up copies of the entire email exchange for anybody who would like them. The public included. Scott, if you would like a copy, you could. Anybody over there? As well. I think it's important that they just hear through what actually occurred.
Can you pass, please?
Been a couple more as well.
Please pass this out to the audience. You can leave it on the front, if you want them. Yes, I have it.
Oh, thank you. This might help clear up the reason it's changed.
Okay, I recognize this, yes.
So just for anybody who's looking at it, you'll see on a couple of pages, half the page is blacked out. It's usually the bottom half. There's nothing redacted from this. That's just a prior part of an email chain that you will have already seen by the time you get there. So it starts off with an email from Jonah, September, sorry, this would be July 11 at 11:10, to the Selectmen and the Town Manager. And it starts with a screen print of something that's labeled Exhibit A. It shows the establishment of the Climate Action Plan Committee as it was, appeared in our last town warrant.
Can I have a copy of it, please? I didn't mean to interject, but I do.
By all means. And this is what Town Meeting did in fact vote on. I won't read through the whole thing, but this is the proposed article, and this is what Town Meeting voted on, followed with the following comment. "I would appreciate an explanation to the following questions. Please note the attachment which prompts this inquiry for an explanation. Why is it that six people volunteer for the Climate Committee and six were supposed to be selected according to the attached page, but only five were allowed to be chosen? Looking at the Climate Committee's own proposed page referenced above, someone changed the number of people down to five before the selection process began. Why is this? The Town Meeting reps voted in good faith on a proposal for nine in total, of which six persons would be required from the general public and population of Stoughton. This ignores the number of town, this ignores the number the Town Meeting rep voted for, voting, all caps, voted on. Further, I have made several good-faith attempts to get in the upcoming Climate Committee's meeting date, time, and places for the procurer of the committee, Molly, but I've had zero response to my three requests. Could you please give me, get back to me on these matters?" So I looked into it, and the first set of statements were simply false. We voted for six members as was required, and we, so I responded back. Unfortunately, I was mostly sort of focused on the first part of the request, not the second part, but on this accusation that we had somehow missed our duty on this case. I just responded back about, at 11:22, so about 12 minutes later, on July 20, the Select Board voted, sorry, appointed six members to the Climate Action Plan Committee as required by the Town Meeting's vote. This vote was reaffirmed on July 23, sorry, July 27. Be well, Stephen Cavie. At 11:52, I received a response, and this was CC'd, all the members of the board plus the Town Manager's office. I still have not received the information I requested as to when, where, and time of the committee meeting. Can you please provide that information? Can you please provide that information? And at this time, there was no, that I'm aware of, there was no date, there was no attempt for them to meet. Additionally, besides appointing members, the select board had no jurisdiction over this, so I responded back. The select board has no jurisdiction over the Climate Action Plan Committee. We don't know when they will meet or where they will meet, only they can decide that. They are required to post their meeting's agendas at least 48 hours before they meet, not including weekends and holidays, in accordance with the open meeting law. I suggest you keep an eye out for those postings to know the answers to your question. Be well, Stephen Kavy." At 1 o'clock, 1:08, I received a response that said, "So you're saying that you can't find the information out for me, even though I'm requesting it from you? Exactly where is it posted? Because the town website doesn't have the category of information." Which is probably the case, because the committee hadn't yet formed. To which I responded, "I'm personally not willing to take ownership of tracking and reporting on the meeting schedules of autonomous boards and committees outside of my jurisdiction. Similarly, if someone wanted to know when the next planning board or finance committee meeting is going to occur, I would ask that they consult the town website, or reach out to the members of those independent bodies. I still do not have, sorry, I simply do not have the time to put into areas outside my responsibilities, since the information you're looking for is public information, to which I have no special access. I regret that I cannot, I will not be able to assist you. With respect to the Climate Action Plan Committee, the select board's only role in the appointment, was in the appointment of six members. We accomplished that requirement on July 20th, and have no further role in their work, including when and where they assemble. June 20th, sorry, June 20th, and have no further role in their work, including when or where they assemble. Any questions you have regarding this committee should be sent to the committee itself. Be well, Stephen Kavy." To which I received a response at 4:39. "I've already told you that after three attempts to contact Molly, she hasn't responded, therefore I'm asking you to please reach out to her. If Molly has responded, then I would, then I would not, I wouldn't have bothered you. I feel as though I'm being thwarted from getting this information." At this point, I didn't have any further information to provide, and I felt like I said everything that I possibly could on this matter, and beyond just feeling like, as a select board member, my role is not to be the personal secretary of every member of the community, I just simply had other things I was working on. I have a day job as well. The following day, let me show you, no, two days later, I received an email, this is June 13th, at 2:22, I received the following response. "Mr. Kavy, there are no detrimental consequences that will severely impact your life for forgetting to let me know dates, times, places of upcoming climate meetings, but as an, a quote, 'elected selectman,' when a constituent requests such benign information, your present response is not only unhelpful and unreasonable, but it renders you to appear unwilling to assist or help. Due to the aforementioned, I am officially requesting time to be heard on this matter at the next selectman's meeting, please. Thank you in advance." I was the only person on this message, so I forwarded it to Chair Roberts with the following message. This is at 3:20. "Chair Roberts, I'm forwarding the below, because you're responsible for the select board's agenda, and adding items are done at your discretion. Be well, thank you, Stephen Kavy." The following page, unfortunately, I did have Deborah's responses, it's below, though. It says, "Hello, Ms. Jonna Kennick," which is, I think, how your, that is how your email reads. "Nice to virtually meet you. The next select board meeting is tentatively scheduled for July 25th. This is a tentative date, because it is unconfirmed. During this meeting, there will be an agenda item and time to hear and potentially act upon citizens' comments. The select board ongoingly updates the town website to publicize our meeting dates. Regards, Deborah Roberts, Chair, Select Board." To which Jonna responded, "Hello, Deborah, thank you for the information, I will be there tonight." And this was sent earlier today. "My name is Jonna Rosenblatt, and my email is jkennick. I appreciate your help." And that is the end of the correspondence. I'm certainly willing to hear a criticism of that, if there's other people who believe that that was inappropriate. Personally, I did make an attempt to, even where it started off as a hostile comment to the board, accusing us of doing things we did not do, still did my best to try to point in the right direction, and I didn't have any special information that she couldn't get herself, but the idea that it's, became my responsibility to run it down and respond to it, I thought was more than I felt our charter and general laws require of me, and I think I did everything I had to with regard to this correspondence. As I said, I'm willing to hear criticism. I do ask that this email, I'll send this over to, I'll CC this to Ms. Stanton, and also to Gilda, that be added to the minutes, so that it's clear that what actually transpired in these correspondence. Thank you.
Can I respond? Thank you, Mr. Kavy, for that detailed explanation. I would, you raised your hand, you would like to make a comment, but I would like to say, you would not hear any criticism from me in this regard. It is troubling that, I know you had other things going on, we all had other things going on, in regard to the select board, such as writing policies, so once again, you will not hear a criticism from me. I would like to ask our resident, her name on the email is Jonna Kennick, but she corrected and said her name is Rosenblatt. So I would like to hear, what, what went wrong with this whole dialogue?
Well, what went wrong, I think, is it was predicated on the fact that, at the beginning, before this situation even happened, when I came to the meeting to be potentially chosen as one, even though I didn't feel it was, well, anyway, even though I came down to be potentially selected, at that point, I had said to him, "There's five people," excuse me, "six people here in five positions," because that's how I thought it was, I was told that, and I was misinformed, so I'm wrong on that, that's fine. And when I started off, when I first sat down, I said, "I just want to ask, because there's six people in five positions, can't we just have everybody? What would be the big deal?" You know, I just thought that was an innocent question, and I felt he pretty much jumped on my throat, and was, it was unnecessary for him to be combative. He said something to the effect of, "We are the ones that are going to interview the people, and that's how it's going to be done," and just kind of dismissed my question. I think it would have been a lot, a lot different had I had said that, and he said, "Oh, no, you know, there's certain protocols we have to follow, we can't do that, but that's a good question, I understand." It was more combative, it was more to, it was, it wasn't an open, I didn't feel he had an open mind. And I think that set the tone, because I didn't care for the way he answered me, but I wasn't going to say anything there, because I'm trying to get on this committee, in the hopes of getting onto the committee, and I feel that's the other thing that I wanted to address, but I'm going off on a different tangent. I don't feel that you, the, most of the select board, not all of them, really wanted to have balance, they just wanted all people that would toe the party line and would go along with this agenda. I wanted to provide a balance, I wanted to provide, by going into that committee, this is some of the other factors that you might not agree with, but that you have to take into consideration, because if you're going to implement things that are going to affect the town, we should have all issues addressed, all aspects addressed, and I don't feel that that's what, what was trying to be accomplished here. Not by all the selectmen, but by the majority, and that's why I feel I didn't get on. But that's going off on a different tangent, I realize. But that was one of the other things that I was going to address.
So you felt that you were, you applied, so the first issue is regarding your interaction between Mr. Kavy at a meeting?
Right from the get-go.
And then that's the reason you outreach to Mr. Kavy?
No, I reached out to all of you.
Oh, okay.
But he's the only one that responded, so that's why I responded back, no one else did, so that's why I responded to him. So I think that set the tone, because I already felt like he was antagonistic towards me. And I'm not saying that just on my own, I had other people, other townspeople say to me when they saw the meeting, "I found him to be very antagonistic toward you." Now, I didn't go out seeking that, because I wanted to see if anyone else noted it, and if I prejudiced them, that wouldn't be any good, and there were others that said that to me as well.
Thank you very much.
And then I also wanted to-
Wait, just one minute, I just wanted, did you want to make a comment? I'm not trying to do one for one, two for tat, but just to kind of summarize.
I did, because, number one, I don't think it was antagonistic. I think that Mr. Kavy answered the question straight forth, and sometimes, straight forth is not accepted well by some people. I don't know people's frames of mind.
Excuse me, are you referring-
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
I just don't know what you're referring to, are you referring to-
Comment, you made a comment directed at Mr. Kavy, that he was antagonistic. I read the emails, I don't think it was antagonistic.
But I'm not referring to the emails, you're missing, you're, you're-
And then you said that you also said-
No, but I'm referring to the meeting.
No, I'm going to have my word now.
Okay, but you're not, you're not-
You also said here just now-
One at a time, please.
That you felt the board was not open to a process, because you didn't make it on. Now, I voted the way I expected. The problem I have with the whole thing, number one, is you didn't get a response from the chair of the committee, who's responsible for those minutes of the meetings. They're supposed to be, you know, held in accordance with the law. If a resident reaches out, you reach out to the committee chair, which we have zero authority over. That's a stand, a committee of town meeting. So the moderator would be the one that you would reach out to, not a select board member, because we don't have that authority. We could, and we don't have that authority, ma'am.
No, I understand, but I wish I'd been told that.
And I applaud for Mr. Kavy for trying to respond to you.
No, that's fine.
But it was obviously, it didn't go the way you would like, and, you know, so, and I would say, I've had that happen to me, and I've apologized, because I can't control how somebody thinks about my response. But again, I'm more concerned with the whole thing, that you've been ghosted by the chair of the committee. That's unacceptable.
Exactly.
That's unacceptable.
That's all I tried to say, and when I reached out for help, I got, I got-
And I agree with you on that.
I got crapped on.
So I promise you, that I will make sure the chair gets a message through the moderator, that when a resident reaches out to her and asks for minutes of the meeting, she has an obligation, under the law, to follow that.
Perfect, that's all I'm asking for.
Exactly, and that will be corrected.
Not what I got responded by that, from that.
Well, again, I mean, I can't-
It was circular, and it got me nowhere.
I'm not going to get involved with that debate, but all I'm saying is, you are right in that, and I'd like to make sure that we resolve this now, because we'll talk about this all night long, and I don't think we'll resolve it to everybody's liking, but one thing that you are 100% right, and I will personally reach out to the moderator to make sure that the chair of the committee gets you those minutes of the meetings, and to make sure that those minutes are posted, like they're supposed to be, with the town clerk's office for the residents, and to make sure that the town manager gets them, so that they can go on the town website. That's what the whole issue is, and you're spot on for that one.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll get that done. You know, and again, I, what we do here, and I've said this many times, we're residents like you, we're up here just trying to do the right thing, and unfortunately, sometimes these debates take off, and people wonder what this one meant by this, and I've always said, "Listen to the words I'm saying, don't think about what I mean." So I apologize that you have, on behalf of the town, you shouldn't have had that problem from the chair of that committee.
All I wanted.
And I will personally call the moderator, and make sure that you get those minutes.
Thank you. And I just want to interject with one quick thing. I wasn't referring to the emails, I was returning to, referring to the specific meeting, so I was trying to correct you, in case you were going to go and address that, I didn't want you to address the wrong thing.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to get, that was between you and Mr. Kavy.
I got you, I got you, I got you.
I trust Mr. Kavy, and that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And then you had a second issue, I don't think there's anywhere else to go with that part of the conversation, but you had another question. I wanted to make sure.
Yes, well, basically, I went off on that tangent, and Joe McCrisky was kind enough to give me what I was seeking. All I was seeking was an answer, and I even would have said to Mr. Kavy, which I was, I should have, I was trying to interject before, when he was just dismissing me, because that's how I felt it was, whether he was trying to do that or not, you're not acknowledging that I even felt that way, which is very disheartening, but nonetheless, if you had said to me something to the effect of what Joe said, or, you know, "I don't know when the meetings are, it's not really under my jurisdiction, I'm going to make a phone call, I'll find out for you. Molly, what's, could you let me know?" That's all I was asking for. You made this bigger than it had to be, that's how I feel, because I felt I had to keep coming back, because I wasn't getting my answer answered, and I was being dismissed, and I didn't care for it, and that's why I came, maybe, you said I was, came off aggressive, which I have to laugh, because most people say I'm very soft-spoken and meek, and I never hear that, so maybe I'm finally getting a little more assertive in my life, but I say "please" in the emails, I, I mean, you're also asking me not to anticipate what his, what he was trying to get across to me, yet you're telling me how I came across to you, and that wasn't accurate either, that's all. But, because I wasn't being aggressive, that's, I had other people look it over to give me their opinion, to see how it was coming off, and no one used the word aggressive, and these aren't aggressive people, so I, I find that a little, a little bit of hard to swallow, but you have your right to your opinion, I'm not going to hold it against you. You seem very kind and nice when you answer me in my email, and I appreciated it, and I really did mean what I said, and thanking you for your time and your effort in that, so. But Joe really nailed it, he just took it and answered it, that's all I wanted, and it took me an awful lot of going around in a circle to finally get this, so thank you.
Yes, Mr. Coulter, I have something else to say.
Maybe I just suggest, in general, that in the future, emails can be often misunderstood and misinterpreted, that a phone call be made to me or any member of my office, and we'll be happy to track that down.
Perfect.
We're paid employees, the board of all volunteers who work 30 hours a week on making policy, and I can, I can tell you just for the record, not because he's my boss, I worked in the legislature 13 years, in Kingston as a town administrator for two and a half, and here for nine months, I would suggest you and Mr. Kavy sit down, because I don't know a finer gentleman I've ever worked with, just wanted to say that.
Okay, well, I didn't get that impression, but I'm always open to making that happen, so we resolve things and put them behind us. I'm a big fan of that, so that's fine. Okay, so my door is open.
Don't be afraid to look up the chair's home telephone number in the book and call her up.
Do we know who the chair is, Madam Chairman?
Oh, you mean Molly Cochran?
Yeah, Molly Cochran is the chair.
Do we know that is the chair?
We do not know that Molly Cochran is the chair.
Right, so I mean, I'm, I'm kind of concerned that we are disparaging another member of the town, who has taken the time to be involved in the town, when we don't even know who the person is.
Well, can I inter-
Mr. Kavy, I just referred to the chair of that committee.
No, I know, but other people have not done that.
Okay, but the point is, when I wanted to sign up for the committee, I was in email contact in connection with Molly all along, then once I was not selected, then I was blown off, and she never answered me three times, so that's why I-
I wonder how long we're going to go on with this kind of discussion, and whether this is the forum for that, and I think that we need to develop some ground rules on dealing with issues like this.
That's exactly where I was going with it.
Thank you.
Okay. I wasn't trying to disparage anyone, it's just that I was in email contact with her, she was answering me, answering me, and then when I wasn't on the committee, she just completely ghosted me.
Madam Chair, I move that we take a five-minute recess.
Can I say one thing?
Before we do, Mr. Corora has a comment.
This is why I don't email anybody. You want me, you call me. Most people show up at my garage.
You don't have your phone number on there.
No, it's in the book, though.
Oh, okay.
There's a motion on the floor to have a five-minute recess, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, just five minutes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are we ready to, is five minutes up? Hello, is everyone ready to reconvene? It's been about five minutes. I use the sun. The Select Board will reconvene tonight, July 25th, at 8:01 PM. Our agenda items are, we're on agenda item number four, citizens' comments. Are there any citi-
We're all done with that.
Well, might be someone online, I just want to recognize if there's someone online for citizens' comments. With none, moving right along to our next agenda item, consent agenda. Approval A, 5A, approval of open session meeting minutes of June 6, 2023, June 13, 2023, and June 15, 2023, and 5B, application for road race or parade permit, Stoughton Day on September 30, 2023. Does anyone want to pull any of those agenda items? I see-
June 6th.
30th, I'm sorry. I see Matt Kouchan Recreation-
Ben J.
Yes.
June 6th.
June 6th, you're pulling, holding June 6th. Are there any other items? Okay, with there being none.
Can we just have Matt do a presentation after Lou handles his? That way people will know that it's happening instead of just punching it through.
Oh, wonderful, that's a way to promote the event as well. Mr. Gito, first for June 6?
Yes, on, on those meetings, I had sent a note to Gilda and to the rest of the board members indicating a change that, that should be made in the minutes. And it reads as follows, "Mr. Gito suggested the application for constables that were for public review, like the information in the agenda packet, exclude the social security number of the applicants for constable. The social security number can be blacked out or other, or in other ways be excluded." And the reason for, for that is that the social security number is an important, an important item, and in fact, can be used to, to sort of mess up a person's life and steal an identity from a person. And we shouldn't be having that in our packet. I don't think we should have it in our packet at all, and, but certainly it shouldn't be in a packet that goes out for the, for all the world to see, because it's not only the people in town that can look at, at the internet, but anyone in the world. So we should be careful about that. So that's, that's what I said, and, or the essence of what I said, and I would like that recorded in the meeting.
Do you want a motion to amend that, Lou?
That, that is my, my motion.
Second.
So when we, we vote on it, we vote it as amended. Mr. Kouchan, can you tell us about your event? Please state your name and your title, please.
Matt Koshon, Recreation Director. So Stoughton Day, proposing September 30th, Saturday, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Halloran Park this year. Food trucks, live bands, we'll have close to 50 local vendors, kids activities, touch a truck. It is honestly my favorite community event to run, because it's a big party in the park with neighbors and community members, that we get to mingle for a couple hours, and get to know one another and have a really good time. So hopefully we'll have some good weather, I encourage everybody to come out. Anyone that would like to participate as a vendor, whether you're a nonprofit or a local business, registration will be up on our website at stoughtonrec.org. I'll put it up, try to put it up tomorrow. They can sign up for a table, and we'll give out more information prior to the event. But I really encourage everybody, if you're new to town or haven't been to this event, please come out. It's a really fun community, community day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda, the minutes of June 6 as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. Moving right along to the next agenda item, which is boards and commissions, Brockton Area Transit-
The whole consent agenda?
We did. Yes, our motion was to approve the consent agenda, that was 5A, the meeting minutes, and 5B, which was the road race, that were approved. You're quite welcome. The next is Brockton Area Transit, motion to appoint Mr. Zoll to that commission.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations, Mr. Zoll. Did you want to say a few words, or just accepted and handshake and that's it? Please state your name and address, if you're here.
Thank you. I've served on that particular board for several years beforehand, and I will be attentive to the needs of seniors going through the council of aging, and to disabled people going through the council of disabilities, as well as other constituencies, and I've served in the town in other capacities my 38 years here, and that's, that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zoll. Please feel free to come back and give us updates as you hear things. Thanks. Moving right along to agenda item number seven, to consider adjustments to the solid waste rates policies, practices, procedures, and operations. Votes may be taken. Mr. Calder.
Good evening, Madam Chair. On behalf of the Solid Waste Working Group, I'd like to thank you and the members of the board for this opportunity to present our recommendations for changes to the solid waste operation and its rate structure. Madam Chair, earlier this year, I alerted the board to significant structural deficits in the FY '24 budget for three enterprise fund accounts and in the solid waste department, which is not an enterprise account. The structural deficits impact free cash, limits on our ability to build our reserves, and threaten our bond rating. Upon disclosure of these serious financial issues, the board provided me with clear guidance with respect to the solid waste program. The board's instructions included the creation of a solid waste working group, the examination of historical financial data, the evaluation of standard operating procedures, and research on industry best practices that support our fiscal and environmental obligations. The board further directed that we schedule a public information session to inform residents of the scope and complexity of the solid waste problems. That session was held on April 13. Considerable input was received from our residents at that time. Finally, the board held two rate hearings, which were rebroadcasted by SMAC more than 40 times. I'd like to thank SMAC for their cooperation and for their partnership in doing that. During those rate hearings, we received valuable and informative feedback from those in attendance. I'm pleased to say that the feedback we received has shaped the program that the Solid Waste Working Group is recommending to you this evening. Should you support this program and recommendation, I have taken the liberty of preparing a motion for members' consideration. I've broken this presentation down into two or three very simple areas, none of which the public has not seen in the past in previous presentations. I'd like to start with the major objectives that are the foundation of our proposals. They have not changed in many regards. As a reminder, those objectives which we intend to achieve, number one, to fully extinguish the solid waste structural deficit in the FY '25 budget. Let me explain that. We can't close the deficit in fiscal '24 because enacting the program October 1st only gives us two quarters of these changes. So the first full budget where this program is enacted, it's our goal to get to breakeven. That's our objective. Objective number two, to improve roadside cleanliness and overall town appearance. Three, to separate and manage Stoughton's per capita household waste by separating residential waste from solid waste streams, i.e. furniture, white goods, et cetera. Four, to implement effective programs for inspectional services and program enforcement. An inspector will be beginning employment with our town, which has been budgeted for two years and unfilled, on August 7. That person will be, will be performing zoning enforcement services under the direction of Mr. Tisdale, but for the first 90 days, we'll be coaching, teaching, working with our teams to educate and bring awareness to the public with regard to the separation of waste streams. He'll be driving around to every planned pickup site every day, knocking on doors and sharing information. Fourth objective, to implement effective programs, oh, excuse me, for program enforcement. We will be partnering with Stoughton's Law Enforcement Police Department, and we will be stopping at the borders, illegal dumping wherever possible, and when we catch the people that are bringing that material into town, we will seek to prosecute them under the full extent of the law. The fifth objective, to increase recycling efforts by promoting education and awareness to all Stoughton residents. Those have been our objectives from the beginning, and they remain our objectives today. Here are the key components of the action plan, which I know our residents are waiting to hear. This presentation will be provided in the back, I believe it is provided in the back, if not, it will be, and it, it matches up exactly with the brochures at the back of the room, so no need to take notes. Beginning October 1st, the flat quarterly rate of $90 per household will be assessed for rubbish removal. It is, it'll begin October 1st, and it'll be effective in the February 24, excuse me, the February 2024 billing.
That's per quarter.
That's per quarter, thank you. We'll reevaluate the program next July 1st. We will take the actual six months of performance to reevaluate the rates to determine whether they should be adjusted up or down. The objective will remain for years to come to keep this program at breakeven. The second major step in the action plan, we will separate residential rubbish, white goods, and solid waste. The third objective, schedule pickup and publish rate for solid waste management, furniture, bedding, whites, et cetera. We will provide a phone number, a direct line to the program manager, who will schedule the pickups of those materials. Those will not be included in the rubbish pickups. Number four, senior eligibility has been set at 65 years old, and seniors will receive a 50% discount off of the rate. In fact, that's a slight, a modest decrease over what seniors are paying today. Number five, owner-occupied homes that are held in trusts are eligible for this discount. Number six, there will be premium rates charged for multiple family homes. A two-family quarterly rate is $225, that's 2.5 times the unit rate. A three-family quarterly rate is $360, that's four times the quarterly rate. Now, why is that? Because there's a turnover in residents all the time. It's where we have our greatest expense in labor and disposal costs. Number seven, there is no change in the existing rubbish and recycling curbside pickup schedule. Number eight, all rubbish put on the curb. must be packed in a plastic bag of your choice or in a barrel of 32 gallons or less. We will not pick up rubbish on the curb that is not packaged in some way, either in a plastic bag of the homeowner's choice or in a plastic barrel. Why is that? A lot of the trash in town is from material blowing around off the curb into neighbors' yards, onto the streets. And the barrels should be covered. If it's in a plastic bag within the barrel, it doesn't need to be covered. So we're serious about beautifying Stoughton. And thank you, Bob, for mentioning that. We're very serious. So not only do we have to stop illegal dumping and putting material on curbs four days before their pickup, which we'll react to, but we've got to make sure it's secure in either a bag or a barrel. A bag of your choice, not one you have to purchase for the town of Stoughton. Number nine, looking to the future. The Solid Waste Working Group will invite the Community, Energy, and Sustainability Committee members and Climate Action Plan Committee members to engage in discussions regarding future program improvements. There were many recommendations made over the past two rate hearings that we're going to study and we're going to do that in collaboration with those two committees. And finally, number 10, the Solid Waste Working Group will extend an open invitation to all town meeting reps to see if they choose to attend the monthly meetings where they can give their input. So that is the action plan. With respect to education and awareness, a short-term awareness and outreach strategy will be executed to inform residents of the program changes, rate increase, and fees for solid waste pickup and disposal. I want to review just a few of the elements of our communication plan. Number one, the brochure you will find at the back of the room will be printed in English and in Portuguese and will be distributed widely across the town, at stores, at the library, and the like. In the month of September, which is the month prior to the execution and kickoff of the plan, we're going to do two 911 notification calls, bringing to people's attention that the program begins October 1st and that they should pick up a brochure so they understand the rate, the fee for services, and et cetera. Town Facebook will be loaded with the brochure and all pertinent information. We are considering mass mailing of the brochure to every resident. The only thing that may change that is the expense associated with the mass mailing. But we're looking to find that money in the budget. The new electronic billboard, which will be built in front of DPW, will list information every day on what route and to where to pick up that brochure. The town website will be updated every week. There will be an October public information session, which SMAC will cover and replay twice a week for two weeks. SMAC will interview the department head, who is Paul, and myself so that we continue to get information out to the public. Number nine, we'll be doing a council on aging presentation. We're going to video that and play that on SMAC as well. And finally, we're going to engage the schools, community groups, and the general public in including themselves and joining us in a townwide cleanup day on October, where the DPW will be providing roll-off containers, barrels, plastic bags, and we try to give the town a real facelift before the winter months are upon us. Madam Chair, while I'm proud of the work performed by the Solid Waste Working Group, our work is not done. While we ask for your vote on this proposal so that we can implement the plan, we will continue to meet monthly to examine opportunities for the program improvements proposed by residents. Those programs, which we will examine at the request of residents, include pay-as-you throw, a private pay rubbish program, use of drums and/or stickers, and the construction of a townwide transfer station. We will invite town meeting members and the public interest groups to join the working group in its examination of alternative approaches to rubbish and solid waste management. I want to make clear before I get an aggressive email, we're not, the committee is not, right now, proposing any of those alternatives. But the public asked that we study those alternatives. So I don't want anybody to write and say that go into private pay. That's not our plan. But because members of the public asked us to research it, that's our responsibility, that's our duty. And in next July, we will bring a report to this Board summarizing the data we've uncovered on those options. And if the Board instructs us, as you did here, to move forth with further examination, we'll do that and we'll be ready for a mid-year recommendation on the rate and structure. In closing, I just want to remind everybody that the fees for solid waste removals, for transportation and disposal, and the fee for white transportation, there is no disposal cost, has been and is listed in the brochure and that hasn't changed. So Madam Chair, I've taken the liberty pending your deliberation or the Board's deliberation. We've taken a shot with review of counsel on a motion. But certainly, myself and the committee, the working group members are happy to answer any questions that the members may have before asking for that vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Calder. Does any Board member have a question or comment? Mr. Carrara?
The only comment through you, Madam Chairman, to the town manager and the committee. 2029 is when we have to reestablish our rates with CMAS or COVANTA, whatever you want to call it, this week. But that's when I think we'll be looking... Tom can report on it, but I don't think we have to worry about it because we're safe to that date. Because we have the same rate till that date. And by them separating what we've done now should help us a lot and be able to sustain what we're doing till at least 2029 to find out if they are going forward still down there or changing another way. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Carrara. Mr. Calder.
Madam Chair, I agree with Scott's point. That is the biggest expense in this program is the user fee for the rubbish that we dispose of and the solid waste we bring to the CND facility. However, there are other variables that we can't be certain of in making projections for getting to breakeven. We don't know how many of our seniors are going to take advantage at 65 of this new discounted rate. That's going to impact our breakeven. We don't know how many multifamilies are going to turn to private pay pickup because their rates are going up significantly. It would have been anybody's guess. So we made assumptions on what we think the impact of those two policy changes will be. But we won't know until at least two full quarters of running the program what the hard numbers are. And that's why, although I agree with Scott completely that the biggest impact item is CMAS, those other variables could make a substantial swing for the good or the bad. And it's only something we can evaluate after actually running the program for two quarters. I know Scott agrees with that, or at least he better.
Are there any other questions or comments? My questions have been answered time and time again as I reflect on the public hearings and the information that was requested by our residents, by the citizens of the town of Stoughton, whether they were here, online, or on the phone, or email. You put together a nice first step at this serious, very serious issue. So I commend you and your team for doing that. And the idea that you're going to monitor this and you have set a time when you're going to specifically, we're going to put it on our calendar and pin it on for our next, for our agenda at the appropriate time so we ensure fellow select Board members and the audience that we are monitoring and we won't forget. So thank you so much for identifying a date because a lot of times you just, a lot of people say, "Oh, yeah, we'll do it next year." But they don't set a specific date. That means it's open-ended. But you did differently.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And your team for doing that. Anything else? Motion? Oh, yes, Mr. Carrara, please, feel free.
Before the vote, I'd just like to thank all the residents who showed up at the two meetings for their time and input on the situation. And it shows great faith in their effort that their rights as citizens are working. We listened, we heard, we deliver now. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Steve?
If you would like me to read the motion and then you could adopt it, Mr. Kayvey. I move that in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 28(c), and any other applicable authority, the Board vote is follows. One, to set the fees for the collection and disposal of bulky items as follows. A, fiberglass bathtub, $40 each. B, mattress, $60 each. C, box springs, $25 each. D, couch, $51 each. E, sleeper couch, $64 each. F, monitor and laptops, $20 each. G, televisions, $20 each. H, furniture larger than four feet by four feet, $45 each. I, furniture smaller than four feet by four feet, $31 each. J, electronics not otherwise specified, $20 each. Two, to set the rates for annual rubbish collection effective September 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, as follows. A, single-family homes, $90 per quarter. B, two-family homes, $220 per quarter. C, three-family homes, $360 per quarter. If a multifamily home is entirely occupied by a single family with members of such family living separately in each unit, the single-family home rate of $90 per quarter shall apply. Single-family households seeking this relief shall submit a request for the same with the town manager and shall provide such application and documentation as the town manager shall reasonably require. The town manager, in his or her sole discretion, uncontestable discretion... Ooh, excuse me, strike that. The town manager, in his or her sole uncontestable discretion, shall timely act on any such request and the town manager's decision shall be final. Three, and further, to provide a 50% discount on all rates for residents 65 years of age and older in a single-family home, provided said resident occupies the residence being served and is an owner of said residence. Whether or not said residence is owned in trust, provided the resident demonstrates eligibility under the Department of Revenue Informational Guideline Release Number 91-209. Four, to provide recycling collections twice monthly for properly separated recyclable items, provided that the department be directed to refuse to collect recyclable items which have been commingled with non-recyclable items and provided such items are placed in a container labeled, quote, recyclables. Five, to prohibit the following items from being left for regular collection and to direct the department to refuse to collect such items. A, home construction, repair or demolition materials, including but not limited to sheet rock, shingles, lumber, fences, carpeting, rugs, and other like materials. B, logs, stumps, brush, branches, and other yard raised. C, rocks, dirt, concrete, asphalt, sand, gravel, and other similar materials. D, pallets and skids. E, hot coals or embers. F, tires. G, motor oil. H, bathroom fixtures, including but not limited to toilets, sinks, tubs. I, animal excrement. J, 50 or 55-gallon drums. K, car parts. L, furniture. M, mattresses. N, TVs, monitors, printers, or other electronics. O, fluorescent light bulbs. Six, to provide collection and disposal of bulky metal objects at a fee of $30 per item. Oh, I apologize, one more. Seven, the Board, A, hereby delegates to and authorizes the town manager, in his or her sole uncontestable discretion, the authority to grant abatements in full or in part to any of the above upon proper application, provided that any such abatement does not conflict with state law, that the applicant demonstrates a unique hardship, financial or otherwise, and that such abatements are in the public interest and the enforcement of the fee would otherwise do manifest injustice. The town manager shall timely act on such requests and the town manager's decision shall be final. And, B, hereby requires... And, B, hereby requires the town manager to record and preserve for three years the record of each abatement in a form readily available for public view. End.
Thank you. I would like to adopt that motion with the following minor amendment. Item 2, to set the rates for annual rubbish collection effective October 1st rather than September 1st, 2023 through July 30th, 2024, as follows.
All in favor and we'll do this by roll-call vote? Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kay?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. It's a unanimous decision.
Thank you, members. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other business for the Board? If not, the Board will be entering into executive session to discuss, A, strategy with respect to collective bargaining with AFSCME Council 93, Public Safety Dispatch, Stoughton Police Patrolman's Union, Stoughton Professional Administrative Employees Association, Stoughton Police Superior's Officers Union, MCOP, Loco 461, and the Stoughton Library Staff Association pursuant to GL, General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a.3, and subject to the Chair's declaration. And also in executive session to discuss pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a.3, subject to the Chair's discretion, to discuss imminent anticipated integration. I made the finding that discussing these items in open session may be detrimental to the town's negotiation or litigation positions. Therefore, they will be discussed in executive session. We will not be returning to open session, but will adjourn from the executive session. Motion to adjourn into executive session, please.
So made.
Second.
All in favor, we have to do this by roll-call vote? Going to executive... Yes, sir. Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair Kayvey?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you very much and have a nice evening, everyone. Good night and see you next time.